Yes, please. Motion to come out of camera. Okay, we're good. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. And welcome, Ryan. Ryan McKenzie?
Yep.
And he's working upstairs with Tracy, and he has a presentation for us. So you're having fun?
Yep.
That's what I thought.
So my name is Ryan McKenzie. I'm a student at NSCC in Bridgewater, but I'm actually from here. I just took the course up there. And I'll be graduating this June from architectural drafting. And for the past five weeks, I've been working at the town hall, creating like 3D virtual landscapes of Main Street, starting at the town hall, going all the way down to the thrift stores where I made it to. And I think they're going to be used so that if we're making any renovations to any buildings, you can make the renovations first in the actual SketchUp program, and then you'll be able to compare it and see what it looks like compared to the rest of the town. So the first thing I had to do was I had to go and actually measure the footprints of all the buildings so that I actually had like an accurate drawing for them. And then I would measure them, then I would come back, and I would create them one block at a time. So when I was measuring, I also took a bunch of pictures, and I used Google Maps for a lot of it, actually, because I had to compare it to the actual facade and all the detail. And I usually just started from the bottom and worked up, just like if I was actually making it, like if a construction worker was making it. And I averaged about a block every two days, but it really depended on how complex each block was, how many faces there were on it, and how many buildings there were on the block itself. And the majority of them only had two faces, though, because they're kind of all pressed together, except for the ones on the end that have three faces. So that really, you've got to take that into consideration when you're doing it. The ones with four sides visible took a bit longer, like they take, sometimes they can take two, three day, or probably one day to two day, I would say. And so I prepared a little video here of all of the, it's just a 3D walkthrough of it.
Wow.
That's town hall.
Yep. That's correct. Wow. Oh, somebody clean up those windows.
The ground actually cuts out anything underneath of it, so that's why it's not there.
Oh, my dear.
Took about altogether a month, I think, to do. Yeah.
That is awesome, yeah.
Any questions?
No.
Great job.
Great jobs. Very nice.
It took me five weeks to do everything that I got here. I averaged probably about a block every two days.
A while.
Yeah, took a while. Thanks.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Very good, Ron.
Thanks, Tracy.
Were there any obstacles? Like what was the?
There were a few. At first, it just kind of took me a while. I remember all of the actual commands and stuff for the program, so the first few blocks took a little bit longer than the rest of them, but once I got going, it went pretty smooth. Yep.
So this, so businesses come and go.
Yeah.
So you just go in and change the name on the storefront?
Yeah, you could do that. It doesn't take very long. Like you can change any like colors or the textures or anything. You just have to change the names, really, I guess.
Excellent. Good job.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you, Tracy, for, I think he was probably, just did his thing, but guidance helps. That's great. Thank you.
Nice.
We good?
Oh, yeah, no problem. You're welcome.
So that was a pretty realistic and great representation of what it's like to sort of walk down around downtown. And I'm not a big user of like Google Earth, but I believe there are, that you could do that kind of thing, or people do that kind of thing with Google Earth, or put those kinds of, that kind of work on Google Earth. So is it possible that we could put that?
Into Google Earth.
Into Google Earth so that people could experience that the way we just did?
There might be a way. The program I use is called SketchUp. It used to be called Google SketchUp, but I think that it's not Google anymore, so I don't know if Google would still be able to bring it into Google Earth. But I know you used to be able to. It used to be that program that they use that for. There's probably still a way somehow.
Yeah, cool. Thank you.
Thanks. Anything else? Questions?
Good. Thanks.
Thanks.
Okay. CAO report. CAO.
Thank you, worship. The report is attached. It was circulated with the agenda. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them now or at any time in the future.
Go ahead, Councilor.
There's no time like the present time. It's the, oh, these are not numbered, but I'll count. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11. The 12th one at the very bottom. Jeff, what's the story on that? That's 25 percent. That's been since April. It's about proposals to be issued real estate, real estate companies in the town of Yarmouth for a three-year term. Is there an outstanding reason why we haven't got that done?
Nope. The file's on top of the desk and just hasn't gotten my attention, but it's there on my desk waiting for my attention.
Okay, well, it's kind, I would say that like a lot of your things that are very important, to me, this would be one of the important things, to get that out there and get some more response from real estate companies to be out there to see what we have for, you know, for sales, and maybe they can help us out by sell some of our surplus lands. My take, that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good. Any more questions for the CAO? Fire department report. Not that there's been any fires, but do you have anything to report?
Well, we reverse passed, but there's any questions.
So, yeah, so the media piece and everything, I know we talked about that, but it's good that you got ahead of that. Thank you. Go ahead, Councilor.
For the fire chief, I know one of the places were occupied, but the other one on John Street was empty John. Has there been extra effort going around and looking at boarding up places that are abandoned or nobody's in them right now? Or do you think that because we don't know what the cause was on John Street, do we, or is it not?
No, we don't. We can't get into a structure there if it's unsafe to do an investigation. That one had to be torn down, too, because of the structures that were beside it. They were in danger. If it would have fell on them, it would have caused more damage. So no, but normally, when structures are empty for a long period of time, they should be boarded up and everything. We have a fire inspector that's usually called when there's an issue like that, and he goes out and takes a gander at the place and makes some suggestions and stuff.
Okay. When something like this happens, does the fire inspector take a little extra effort or initiative, or just driving around with anybody within the fire department to have a look to see if there's anything that's out of the ordinary for buildings that are empty?
No, not usually for buildings that are empty. Usually when they do board them up and everything, if they do have questions, they'll call him or they'll call me, and we'll give them some advice. And we'll go from there. But there's no actual plan for going around and checking every one of these buildings when they become empty, or nothing like that, right?
Okay. You.
Good. Thank you, Chief. Planning Department, and Caroline is at a planning conference where, would she help plan, actually? So that's great. So any questions to Natalie, maybe we can ask when she comes back? Operational Services. Anything for the engineer? We're close on Hawthorne.
Yes, it's coming along. It looks good. I think it does, anyway. Paving should be done next week. The plantings are coming along. The pavers are being installed this week.
The pavers? Yeah, I saw that, yeah.
I think they look good, actually.
What? Okay, go ahead, then I'll ask my question.
I was just wondering when Green Street's going to be completed.
Green Street will be completed after they tidy up in Hawthorne Street. Top lift of paving to go on Green Street, and then the sidewalk patching will be completed.
Okay.
And landscaping.
So it should be done in the next probably few weeks?
Yep.
Okay.
So they don't, do I understand they don't even open until the first of June, the paving company, or?
Yeah, normally, it's the end of May, first of June. Well, we're June now, so I mean, just about.
I talked to somebody, talked to Young Bridge, and they said the first of June, the land's going to be fired up.
Good. Okay, good.
And I just wanted to, I'm sorry. I just wanted to say, too, I drove down there last night, and on the corner of Southeast Street and Green Street, the sidewalk is all broken up, and it's a mess there. So just in case you didn't know.
That'll be part of the repair.
Yeah. And see, click, fix. When we see those things, we just need to go on, and they'll go right to you anyway, right?
I don't see all of them, no.
But somebody sees them.
Yeah.
Yeah. All the little issues that need to be taken care of. Any more questions for the engineer? Yeah, you do. Sure, go ahead. Go ahead.
I was reading the report on the Gleep Street building and the parking lot, and I was just wondering, because the report doesn't really go far enough on saying how much weight, like when they built it, how much weight was it allowed at that time?
It was never designed or built as a parking garage. It was going to be a floor area, basically a building that would be used as an office building or whatever. It was designed probably for, at that time, 100 pounds per square foot for a live load on the floor.
Okay. It's just that the report now says about people being parked on there, and so we don't really have a measurement of how many vehicles can safely be on there right now. So it's just one, that's why I was wondering.
Well, it's not necessarily the number of vehicles. It's the weight per square foot that's applied to it, so.
So in the.
We've limited to 3,000 KGs vehicles and under.
Okay. All right.
So we're safe? Because that's the question.
That's the question, basically.
Question is, is it safe? And I mean, I assume it is, or you wouldn't let people park there. But we, I get that question a lot, too.
But we don't know if we don't know the weight restriction.
Well, I mean, we did the investigations best we could. I mean, we couldn't document everything because you can't see the spacing of the rebar to see if consistency wrote the whole slab or how it spaced in depth as well. So best guess is that if we limit to 3,000 KGs and under, we should be okay.
So does?
But he has made recommendations for if we want to to upgrade it, putting a steel frame inside the structure to provide added support.
Well, only because, and the language piece, right? So best guess, and we should be okay.
Well, I mean.
That's not fact, right?
Yeah.
CAO.
Yeah, your worship. We had some issues in the structure that became obvious to the engineer and to the people working in the building. Some of the concrete was coming off, little bits were coming off, and there was some concern about the appearance of rust in some areas. And this, I believe, Dave, is the second time we've had engineers in to look at the structure. And this time, it was really more about the structural integrity. And so to say it's a best guess, it's a best educated guess by professionals hired to assess that. It's not that we're sitting around guessing. And the weight restriction that's been applied to parking on that garage is consistent with what the engineer's recommendation was. And he has provided a recommendation to, if we want to bring the building up to a level that we could increase the weight load, ensure the long-term structural stability, the interior frame, steel frame that was recommended in the report, it is in our capital budget for next year.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions for the engineer? Thanks, Dee. I know it's been busy, but it's looking good. So thank you. Finance Department, Jerry. This ought to be short.
Should be. I just wanted to give you a heads up. Couple of things that we've received in the last couple of weeks. Got our report from Eckler on our pension plan. So for last year, the markets did quite well for us. So we'll be looking at a little better than $300,000 gain in our pension expense line. But it's, again, it's one of those accounting lines that the auditors take care of. So that'll affect last year's. And also received the final quarter bill for the municipal police agreement. And it came in a little more than $100,000 less than we anticipated. And digging into it, it's because the strength of the force for the last three months, January, February, and March, was down to 12.1. So about $100,000 savings in the policing for the last quarter. Other than that, we just continue to work on our, the budgets are over, so we're working on our audit plans, and where auditors will be in in two weeks' time.
Excellent. Good. Thanks, Jerry. Go ahead there.
Thank you. Just a quick question. Are you around for the whole meeting, or you're gone after this?
Today.
If so, no, I mean, I want to ask the question. If you're finished with what you have said, then you're going to get up and leave. If so, I want to ask you a question.
I'm staying.
That's, it's further down the road, but it relates to what he is.
Yeah, he's staying.
You're going to stay? I can wait for this, but?
Yeah.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Okay. Any more questions for the finance officer? Good. Recreation. Hello, Frank.
Hello. I just distributed a couple active living promotional campaigns that are ongoing now and coming up, starting next week. With active Yarmouth activities winding down, we've had a week-long of activities going on in and around the area. And then, starting on June the 5th, and running to June the 14th, is our Active Yarmouth Walk and Wheel Fest. So there's a few things ongoing there. This is go time for us. We've got our coordinators in place, planning all our summer programs. And our summer registration day is set for Friday, June the 5th. And that's where the bulk of our customers will come in and register their children for their summer plans. So it's a busy time, lots of things happening. 20-team slow pitch league starting up next week. We've got at least five minor baseball rep teams that are going to be bringing lots of weekend baseball to the area, and teams from away coming in and out all summer long. House league soccer, rep soccer, all that stuff seems to be starting up all at the same time. So it's busy time for our facility crews and getting fields ready and nets up. And good weather brings outdoor activity, so.
Love it. Go ahead there, Councilor.
I know it's a little out of your scope, Frank, but what's the story on the soccer field at the high school? Have you heard anything?
Not a peep. I've walked across it. That's about it. And to me, it looks pretty decent, so.
And we now have the gym at the junior high.
Yes. So we have a community meeting tonight with, I've canvassed potential users, so we're having a meeting tonight just to talk about scheduling and trying to get that gym booked. So, yeah, so lots of stuff going on.
Good. Any more questions for rec. director? Good. Thanks, Frank. Certainly.
Frank, just in your meeting tonight concerning the former junior high.
Parade Street Gym.
The Parade Street Gym.
Good on you.
Thank you. Do you anticipate the cost of access being an issue for the users? Is that a feedback?
No, I hope not. We are going to be charging, we usually only charge condoms now, and other gyms where we have $20 on our safety fees. The people that I talk to don't think that's a big issue.
Great.
Thank you. Good. Economic Development. Welcome, Natalie.
Thank you. I provided my report for May. Included in the package was the, finally, our publication, our eight-page editorial. And I think that the community really represented itself well into the interview, so I hope that you enjoy it. One note within, unfortunately, within the edition is our website was incorrectly identified by our graphic designer, but we have made some correction on the digital website, and then hope to, we will have a correction in the next article. Sorry, in the next issue. Included, I also gave you an update, some detail with where we're at with the facade incentive program. So I've identified two tables. One table, and I'll be updating these monthly, is the specific businesses that are looking to be engaged, whether there's an application pending, approved, or interested in the program. And then also to identify in table two what the total value of the project would be, and then what specific amount would be identified under the facade program. And then the third column on table two would be what we would look to reimburse should they meet all the requirements of the guidelines. So I've put that in there as well. And I'm open for any questions.
I have a question on the facade piece, and it's probably right in front of me, and I haven't. So we put aside, how much money? 180? 150. We put aside $150,000, and we said this many businesses at 5,000, which, number one, we know that they're not all going to take the 5,000. Number two, not all the businesses that signed up are going to take advantage. So when do we go from here to here? When do we extend north and south?
So currently, in our memorandum of understanding, it is for up to October 31st, 2015.
There's the answer. Yeah. Good. Thank you. I knew it was there, I just, okay. And then we'll still have, we'll still have those funds available when we extend?
I would post that to the CAO.
Okay. He just said yes. So good.
Yeah. The society have thought about, a little bit about, what would phase two look like, because they are in speaking with others in the community. So they've identified some specifics that you guys can take a look at.
Okay. And probably everyone at this table, or each of us, have had the questions from outside the phase one area, where you have to start somewhere. But the questions are starting to come because everyone's getting excited about, you know, their piece, which is great.
Yeah, they've built a lot of traction in the last three weeks, especially once it started to get sunnier and drier.
Exactly.
So just within a short period of time, we've had people that we didn't think were going to participate in phase one are interested to receive the packages. So the society's really been doing a good job of doing that one-on-one interaction with the businesses.
Excellent. Good job. I know you've been going great guns, so. Thanks, Natalie. Any questions? Councilor Dennis?
I just wanted to thank Natalie. It's great to see the facade program starting and seeing some of the buildings getting painted and new windows and everything, so that's a plus. Also, I'm looking forward, so that we can say about your interview with East Link, June 25th, at 7 o'clock.
Yeah, I think there's one, the 20th.
Oh, the 20th?
Yeah, I think it's a couple of repeats, so. Yeah, I'll be on there a number of times.
Make sure, yeah, we have an email, don't we? Do we have an email at the date?
Yes.
So we'll get that out there.
It's also in there as well.
All right.
So I hope I did you proud.
I'm sure you did.
Thank you.
Also, I put in the RFP, and maybe Counselor Danny, that RFP is for commercial brokerage services, specifically looking at the old high school. But potentially, depending on where council sees the expertise of that firm to be selected, you could also consider that also for surplus and other areas within the community that you would like to look for real estate services in addition to whatever we've already got.
Good. Go ahead.
When you say brokerage, RFP brokerage, are you looking at just in the town of Yarmouth, or is this for externally, across Nova Scotia or Canada, wherever?
Both. So it will be in the Vanguard. It is also going to be on our provincial procurement system, services system, and it will also be going out to brokerage firms that extend beyond our area that have a good fit with repurposing.
Is that, was that what we voted for? I don't know if that's the kind of, we voted for local, local real estate companies to handle this? Or did we want it, a person that was a real estate company that was unique to doing these big buildings, more or less than local real estate? That was just my thought on it. I'm not sure if I read it right or heard it right, rather than just local broker. It's not that they can't do the job. I'm sure they can, but if it's on a bigger stage, out there more in the global, that's what I thought was what we were doing.
But that's what this is.
Right, so in, sorry.
No, but what she's also saying, what Natalie is also saying is we could take this template and use it for San Antonio RFP for local real estate companies to put in a bid for the other land. for local, local real estate companies to put in a bid for the other lands that we have that are surplus. These are two separate issues. I don't think it's all the same. I don't know.
So, in this document, it explicitly states what the scope of work will be. And it explicitly states the expertise required for that. So, if a local brokerage firm has that capability, they need to demonstrate it in their proposal back to us. So, we didn't want to limit anyone within Nova Scotia or beyond Nova Scotia to apply for this.
Yeah, great. But I thought this was two separate issues. One was just for the school. And the other one that we made a motion on way before this, before the school one, and Jeff, our CEO, was supposed to be looking at. They're two separate issues, so this, that's what I'm trying to get at. This, one issue was just the school for you. The other one is not so much as for the surplus lands that we have.
Correct. This is dedicated to the school.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Good. Okay. Any more questions for Natalie? Thank you very much. Great job. Okay, business. So, seven A, I didn't do this, but Counselor Landrell asked us to remove this. So, seven A will come off if everybody's okay with that. All right. He's going to do more work on that. Seven B, backgrounder for Canada Legacy two thousand and seventeen, that you CAO?
Give her a shot.
Give her.
Okay. So, there is a, an intermunicipal project that's being proposed for the Canada Legacy two thousand and seventeen fund. And it is a project that is to create a docudrama, so a film, that tells the history of our, of our region. And by our region, we're talking about from Kings County down as far as Argyle. What is being proposed here is a municipal corporation be established to make the application and to, to own the project, to run the project. So, there's an intermu, draft intermunicipal agreement attached to the request for decision. This is moving very rapidly. I, I hope I emphasized that enough in that they want to do a signing of the agreement tomorrow. They, they want to get the application into the federal government tomorrow. They believe that being in early will be advantageous. They have the MP's support for the project. And they're hoping that this is something they can deliver in two thousand and seventeen that will have a lasting educational value to people who maybe don't understand the important part of Canadian history that this, this region owns. So, the ask to this council is to join the corporation. A calculation was done for proposed sharing of, of the fifty thousand dollar initial budget for the project. And our share is fairly modest. However, the one recommendation I would make to you, and I'm sorry, I'll give you that number. It is three thousand two hundred and forty-two dollars would be our share. The difficulty we have is this is a very tight fiscal year. We don't have additional money. So, what I would suggest to you is that it probably is a good project. The risk is mitigated somewhat by the fact that there's a three-month opt-out. If the project started to, to spin in a direction that was not favorable to council, there's always the opportunity to manage your risk there. But they figure, they feel it'll be a fully funded endeavor. And with the level of risks they're asking for, my suggestion would be to join, to participate, to help to, to support the project. And with one caveat, and that would be that our money for two thousand fifteen, sixteen would not be available until April first, two thousand and sixteen. In other words, it would come out of next year's budget, our share of that initial contribution.
Good. Counselor McIsaac?
Thank you. They're also looking for a representative to sit on this. So, may I make a suggestion to my colleagues around the table? We wait till their, our other colleagues come back. That's not a big, big thing right now, I don't think, is it, Jeff? The name of representative right now, we have, we could have an attentive one. There's two councils that are missing here now. I don't know if they would want to be on it, but.
You don't want to leave that too long. They've met twice this week.
Okay. Well, we can, we can go for it. I mean, I don't know who wants to sit on it. Maybe Phil, maybe Jim, maybe Sandy. I'm not interested, but maybe yourself, whoever. I don't know if Phil's interested. Maybe our solicitor. I don't know. Seven hundred and fifty dollars an hour. Not a bad gig.
Would you put your light on? I just can't hear you, Jim. Sorry. Go ahead. You're good.
Just tell me again, Jeff. You said we have to respond by tomorrow? Just back and forth.
Yeah. So, there's, they're, because they want to get the application in right away, they've scheduled a signing for those that have agreed to sign tomorrow in Argyle. And so, we're at the last minute. Municipality of Yarmouth agreed last night to participate. Argyle is in, all of the municipalities, in fact, from Kings County to Argyle, with the exception of Clare, have agreed to participate in the project.
So, I'm prepared to volunteer at this point, but do we have to meet in Argyle to sign? Is that, or do we just?
Well, the first decision is whether to participate. So, if I may, you wish.
Certainly.
Yeah. The first decision would be to, to agree to participate with the caveat of deferring our contribution until April first, two thousand and sixteen. And then, the second decision, which, which you can take today or at some future date, is who your representative will be to represent us at that, at that board table.
So, I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve of our participation in this docudrama project.
In Legacy two thousand and seventeen with the contribution to be deferred to two thousand and sixteen, seventeen budget. So, when you, when you put that in there. So, okay, so the second piece is, if you, if, if we just want to make a motion to appoint Jim, the other piece is, it doesn't have to be somebody at the table. It doesn't have to be somebody at the table. So, a community member, and we all know those community members, but if you're willing to do it, then. Okay. Good. Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
So, is there two motions or?
We don't want any discussion from you. We just want you to say yes.
Oh, I'll say yes. We have a motion on the floor which we need to.
Yeah. We have to vote on that motion. So, the motion for, to, to be a part of the two thousand and seventeen Legacy project, deferring the, the funds. All those in favor? Oh, did you want to?
No, I just, just a question.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay. Do we have to go into a council meeting to pass this to make it legal after a special council meeting to make this legit? Because this is just the committee of the whole. It only takes a minute to do that afterwards, if that's the proper way of doing it.
Well, I, I personally hate governance at the last minute, and I know you do too.
Yeah, I do. I really do.
So, if you, if you want to do that, certainly you could do that. If you wanted to provide the notice that Committee of the Whole has recommended it to council, we could take the, out of the pen when we sign tomorrow.
Then, then, I think we could do it either way. I mean, I, I read this, Your Worship, and, and Jim's, so he's volunteering to do it. I don't have any problem with it. I think it's a great idea. And you're right, I don't like the eleventh hour stuff, and it's not the proper way to do things. And once you start setting that precedence, it's, it's not a good thing. So, if it can work without going through a motion for, going for a special council meeting, I prefer not to. Would you recommend not to or just wait to recommend it to council even though we're going to sign it?
Your Worship, I think you can, you can wait to formally ratify that. I think if you, if, I can indicate, communicate this afternoon that Committee of the Whole is in agreement, and we've tentatively named our representative.
Yeah, okay.
But council will ratify those decisions in two weeks, and we can be there for the ceremonial signing tomorrow, indicating our, our intent.
Great. Sounds great. Thank you.
Good.
So, you need a motion that we appoint Deputy Mayor MacLeod as the representative for the Heritage Project?
So, we're going to vote, I'm going to need that in a second. We're going to vote on the first one, the legacy that we're involved. Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. And now, a motion for Deputy MacLeod to do it.
I shall move.
Okay. And seconded. Any discussion? Questions been called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you, deputy. So, do you have all that information? Or you'll get it from Jeff, but it should be right there. Yeah. Thank you. Okay. Two thousand and seventeen Legacy project. Did we just do this? Okay. Well, there's two of them, B and C. Granular materials tenders result. CAO?
Hey, Your Worship, invited tenders were requested from two suppliers for the supply and delivery of granular materials for the two thousand and fifteen construction season. Responses were received from two suppliers with the results as summarized in the Town Engineers Memo. Okay. After reviewing the tenders, it is recommended that the tender be awarded to Lafarge for type one, type two, three-quarter inch clear stone. You getting all this? Three-eighth inch p stone and Aberdeen paving for type one S and viral rock, manufactured sand and borl, and, and borl, provided that the materials meet the required specification as determined by an independent materials testing lab, and that is for your consideration.
So, is this all, did you just list all of them?
Yes.
Okay.
I think.
Moved by Counselor McIsaac? Seconded. Discussion?
Question?
Question?
Questions been called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Go ahead, CAO.
So, Your Worship, this, on this one, if you did, if you were open to having a special council meeting to ratify the tender this afternoon, then, then we have that approved, if, rather than waiting two weeks to officially do that.
Okay. Thank you.
And, and Your Worship, we usually do this when we have a tender, rather than wait. This, this is, this is the normal way of doing business. We have done for lots of years, so. I don't think council has a problem with that. I don't.
We've done it here quite a few times. I just need to be reminded at the end. So, you or Linda. Okay. Good. Request for decision, electronic voting. CAO?
So, Your Worship, in case it wasn't on anybody's radar, there is a municipal election in two thousand and sixteen. And in two thousand and twelve, the town of Yarmouth participated in, or ran our election electronically. There was legislation permitting that at provincial level, going back as far as two thousand and eight. So, in two thousand and twelve, we, we ran an election that was fully electronic. The, the council, I think it's appropriate that you, that you give some direction in terms of how you, how you would like the two thousand and sixteen election to be conducted, if you'd like it to be a traditional election with paper ballots, or whether you'd like it to be an electronic election or some, some combination. I've included a presentation from the UNSM Spring Workshop on your agenda today, as well as a little bit of background information and the returning officers' report from the two thousand and twelve election, as well as some statistics that Intellivote was able to provide us about, about the, the voting. So, my recommendation, and just to go back to two thousand and twelve, we ran a fully electronic election. We, we ran an election where votes, votes were cast through a secure internet voting system. And as a backup and as an alternative, electors had the option of using telephone voting. So, it was fully, fully electronic. We didn't use any paper ballots, either in, in the events poll or on polling day. The, the recommendation I would make for, for two thousand and sixteen is that you consider repeating that process. But again, I respect it. It is, it is your election, not mine. And if you wish to do something otherwise, you just simply need direction. There is a, a provincial effort to procure the e-voting services, being led by HRM this year. And if we are going to do some form of electronic voting, then I would recommend that we, we participate, at least in the investigation stage of that, of that e-voting bulk purchase, as we may end up with a, a better, better price than, than going our, going our own way. So, that's, looking for your direction.
Good. Thank you. Counselor McIsaac?
Thank you, Your Worship. You know, I'll use the mayor's words when she ran for campaign, same as we all did around the table. We all got elected on the e-voting. It worked really great. I know there was some controversy and some people didn't like this. A lot of people don't like change. But once they get used to change, I think it's great. This is going, this is moving in the twenty-first century. There's no, there's no reason why we should step, take a step backwards and go paper ballot or anything. There's really no need of it. It worked. It was efficient. When, when we had it in two thousand and twelve, there was a few complaints, but you know what? There was a lot of people that I know that never voted before, voted in their own privacy of their own home. We got a call, one of my colleagues sitting around the table got a call, an email, I should say. Now, that's a call too, I suppose. He was in, he was in Japan. He voted. And he let him know that he, he voted. So, I mean, that's great. I mean, you reach out, and that's great. So, welcome to the twenty-first century. I don't think we should take a step backwards. I think paper ballots, if, if people so wish, paper ballots. But I don't think we should make that move. Let's keep going forward as, as we did in two thousand and twelve, and let's keep it the same way. So, I would make a, a motion that we, on the recommendation of the CEO and seeing where we had a very successful two thousand and twelve election, I say that we, I make a motion that we use the same, the same format as for the two thousand and sixteen election.
I can second it. Moved and seconded. Any, any discussion, deputy? Phil? Sandy?
I'll shut my light off. I'll turn mine up now.
The only question I have to the CAO is on the second part of the, second part of his, or his presentation there was the going in with the HRM. That's the only, what do you think about that, Jeff?
So, I think that might be an opportunity for us to save some, some time and resources in the procurement side. They are, they're going out doing an RFP, and they've opened it up to the, anybody in the province, any municipality in the province that wants to join in. Now, the nice thing about it is, is they prepare the RFP, they issue it, they evaluate it, they make a recommendation. But at, at no point until it comes back to our council are we bound to any decision. So, there is, every council who participates in the bulk purchase effort will have to individually decide whether to accept the recommendation of the, of the staff that will, that will evaluate the results. So, you aren't necessarily tied to the results of the process, but you may benefit from, from the process. So, I'd recommend we, we play along because it may, may save us time and money.
Is that part of the motion? Or we do that separately?
You could, you could do that separately. Yeah.
You good? Okay. Yeah.
Jeff, we had a larger turnout, and what was the cost? I'm just trying to think, not exactly, but was it cost more this way or less?
I think it has the potential to cost less. I think it cost us probably about the same last time because we went the extra step of enumerating, not just taking the provincial list and updating it through, through voter, voter mail-out and report back. We were really concerned that, that being something new and being a change, that people, if there were issues with the voters' list that caused problems for people being able to vote, we didn't want them to blame that on the electronic voting. If the voters' list wasn't good, then, then it had the risk of blaming the system rather than the fact that the list wasn't good. So, we, we enumerated for the purpose of eliminating, eliminating that issue. That costs money. And, but if you, if you look at electronic voting versus paper balloting, you take, you need fewer people involved in the, in the electronic balloting, and you don't have to produce the ballots themselves. So, it has potential to save money.
Yeah, so am I. My only, my only concern ever is that those that are not computer literate, but they, they can come in like they were going to vote anyway, right? The phone, but they just come downstairs, and it's all, it's all good. Same thing.
So, so that was something else last time that we were concerned about was, was making sure that we had support for people who, who might not be as familiar or comfortable with technology. And so, we did a few things to, to, to help them out. We had a, a voting station set up in Town Hall here in, in the returned officers' area. And that was open, our advanced poll, rather than just being one day as, as, as it has been in the past, advanced polling took place for an entire. been in the past, advanced polling took place for an entire week, and people were able to come into the office, work with Marie and her staff, and get assistance with the voting process through either a computer or telephone, whichever they preferred, and by far, the computer was the preferred method. The other thing that we did is we said, look, we, we can go into the, to seniors' homes with, with tablets, tablet computers, and, and internet connection, and we can actually set up very quickly a mobile polling station, so we actually went out and probably had as many or more polling stations than we've ever had for an election, and again, it was for an entire week, people didn't have to vote when we showed up with, with a tablet, but they could ask questions, go back to the comfort and safety of their own apartment, pick up the phone, or go on their own computer and pass their ballot. So we, we, and we did that with Yakro as well, we went into, to their hall and, and their, their clientele, participated in the voting with the support of, of Marie and her staff, and in addition to that, ahead of the electronic voting, they were very interested and concerned, so I went myself and did a presentation to them, and answered questions ahead of the election about it, they were, they were quite excited. There was, there was not the least bit of fear, certainly there were questions at the start, but they were excited when they understood what the opportunity was, and if you look at the results that, that Intellavote provided us, there were forty-two people who voted in the election who, who were not in Nova Scotia when they voted, but they were eligible voters, and, and including one in Japan, so.
And they have a right to vote, so.
Yeah.
Because I'm not home. So, good, so the motion is on the floor to go with, with the, lock, thank you, electronic voting again, that's the first motion, so, any more discussion?
No questions.
Question's been called, all those in favor? Aye, contrary? Motion carried, and there was a second motion, I'm not sure where, where it was coming from.
Second motion was to go with HRM, is it permanent process?
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Question.
Question's been called, all those in favor? Aye, contrary? Motion carried, Canada one fifty infrastructure program information. CAO?
Your worship, I circulate the information, and I didn't have time to put a request for direction on it, but that's really what we're looking for. So the, the federal government announced last week, I believe it was, a, a program for Canada one fifty, or two thousand seventeen, one hundred and fiftieth anniversary of Canada, they're doing a, an infrastructure program, it's a very short turnaround. The program is being delivered by the, by the regional economic agencies, in our case, that's Akoa, and what they're looking at is, is trying to support the expansion or enhance, excuse me, enhancement of community recreation culture kinds of, of facilities. They are providing up to fifty percent funding, and all projects must be done by March thirty-first, two thousand eighteen. And so, so what we're looking for is, is some direction, the application deadline, I don't know if it was in that document, is from Akoa, yes, it's very soon. It's towards the end of June, so it's, it's a very quick turnaround, and I guess we're looking for some direction in terms of what you would like us to do in terms of application.
Nice opportunity to set up our outdoor rink.
Oh, my goodness.
So, I should say as well, the, the maximum project value, I believe I read in here was one million dollars, and the, I think I read that the, the entire pot was a hundred and fifty million.
Okay.
We should put a suggestion or two, Jeff, you, you were looking for specific suggestions or just support of a project that, that perhaps staff might conjure up?
Where are you, where are you going, Councilor Dennis, or let, let Jeff answer this one, and I'll go right to you, you don't have to put your light off.
Well, there's a couple of ideas we've tossed around, but, you know, we don't, we don't have an all-inclusive list, and we haven't spent a lot of time really thinking about it, there were a couple of ideas, one of them was, was the, the trail, Mont Louis Trail, but we may have another opportunity with Nova Scotia Moves, perhaps, to make an application there, they're doing, doing another intake, and that may be a way of, of achieving some, some additional development on that trail. We talked about a splash pad, there used to be a splash pad of some, of sorts at the South Playground, that is now covered over, but the infrastructure's still there, it fell into disrepair and was, was no longer operational. Replacement of that could be, could be considered, there could be any number of other, other recreation cultural projects, but again, it has to be, it has to involve an existing facility, it can't be a brand-new, from, from the green earth kind of project, it has to be something that's an enhancement or, or a renovation.
Go ahead, can, can, Landy, you can put your light on though, because yours was on, I just had to let Jeff answer that, go ahead.
And I know this project's probably going to be oversubscribed, as they always are, Jeff, but I was looking at, even at the bottom one, is that, so there's enhancement for some sporting facilities, but also, what about salted talking, drinking water treatment and distribution, and also local airports? What projects qualify for CIP one fifty funding, so that's down to the bottoms, I don't know if they'd give preference to the top half or to the bottom part.
Do you want, I'm going to see it there.
There's something that Dave or Rob in the water, part of it might have something that they could, something that's on the books that they might be looking at, I know the other ones, always are a little more flair and, and a little more ready for photo ops for politicians of all stripes and denominations.
Yes, yeah.
Is there anything solid waste management, wastewater infrastructure, I just wonder if there's anything there that Dave might have online?
Your worship, if, if you're interested in a, in a, a broad list that we could provide, we can, we can look ahead at the, well, we can look back at the capital budget, and look at what's on our docket to complete by March two thousand eighteen, and kind of send you out a list. It, it might not be too late, I was thinking about the June council meeting on the eleventh, we could probably put together an application, provided it's not too difficult after that.
I still don't see the date, maybe I'm just missing.
I don't see it in there either.
It's not on, it's not on here, okay. All right. But that's when it has to be finished? Whatever they give us? So.
Yeah, there are application deadlines with most of the regional economic development agency, federal agencies, I was reading last week that most of their deadlines are towards the end of June this year, so they're looking to get the applications in, get them approved, so that the projects can actually have a chance of getting completed by the deadline of two thousand eighteen.
Okay. Good, Councilor McCrae'sick?
Yes, thank you, your worship. This is a fifty-fifty deal, right? And it's a, it's up to one million dollars per project. So, Jeff, my question to you, and to our finance person, if we choose one, do we have monies in our capital, or, I mean, it, this is fifty percent is, is, is a good deal, and it's really worth looking at, a project, I mean, Councilor Mooney picked out a lot of things here, for, for instance, the airport, wastewater infrastructure, I mean, there's a whole lot here, and roads, roads, very important. A million dollars is a lot of money, but I'm not saying we do a million dollars, I'm not saying we don't either, but it should be really looked at, you know, so.
Well, that, that's our intent, is try to get some indication of what you're interested in, and, and so, what, my, my thinking is, is that, is that when you spend money on infrastructure, it shouldn't matter, it should not matter whose money it is, if a project is a priority, it's a priority, and if it has to, if, if we were spending somebody else's money, we should spend it just in exactly the same way we would spend our money, and so that's why I suggest if we look at what, what is already in our capital plan to be completed by that date, and, and kind of give you back that list, there may be, there may be a project that jumps off the page for you. One thing that we want to check, though, is, is whether this money is stackable, and by that I mean, we have an application in through the, the Canada Infrastructure Program, Bill Canada Fund, and it's probably the case that it has to be either that fund or this fund, that you wouldn't be able to stack the money from both programs on the same budget. Find that out, and we would exclude from the list that we would give you back, anything that's gone, that we've applied for under Bill Canada, because we, we couldn't, couldn't do both. So how about we do that, and if.
Good idea.
And, and at the June eleventh, PD, give us some direction.
Yep, good, Councilor Dennis?
Yeah, Councilor Mooney brought up the one that I was going to bring up about the airports, and local roads, but the other one that I see here too is the docks, so I was thinking for our waterfront, so that would be a, a good one too, so maybe we just need to go through them and see which ones we feel that are important, that could do something for the community, and.
Yeah, there's a lot of good stuff on that list.
Yeah. Great, thank you.
You don't get open opportunities like this very often. Good, okay, so, so Jeff, we, can we just leave this with you, or do you need a motion? Okay? Okay, make, looking for a motion, go ahead, Councilor.
I'll make up that motion to bring a list, so that we can pick out which one we feel that would be good to get the grant.
From our capital.
From our capital budget, right.
Good, Lynda, you okay with that one? Okay? Seconded, any more discussion? Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? Motion carried, correspondence for action, rendezvous two thousand seventeen invitation? Go ahead, CAO.
Thank you, worship, I'll just open the invitation, so this is, this is a, an initiative that I believe is being promoted by City of Quebec, and it is a Tall Ships project, and they're inviting for two thousand seventeen, and they're inviting cities or towns, thirty-seven cities or towns, to participate in the planning of, of a Tall Ships event, and so this invitation is for a representative from, from our town to, to participate in a meeting in Quebec City on June sixteenth, just a couple of weeks away, to, to begin the plan that, that event to commemorate our, our history, and so that's, that's for your consideration.
Go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. Just, just a quick glance at this, this is that whose cost? It's, it's an invitation, it's at our cost, and it, it looks like they want, looking for partnerships to partner for Tall Ships to, to come, like, probably to the port of Yarmouth or whatever, blah, 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 there's a lot of money involved here, and I would say, being strapped as we are strapped for cash, at this time, I would make a motion that we send them a letter thanking them for their interest, but not at this time, that for financial reasons, whatever, whatever, we have to bow, I mean, we don't, we don't have the money to do this, you're talking tens and tens of thousands of dollars to get into this, and even just to go there to sit, sit in on the conference, it wouldn't be fair to go there, just to sit there, and when we know we're not going to participate, at least I don't think we are anyway, because I don't, I know we don't have the funds, unless there's funds somewhere that this council doesn't know about, but, anyway, that's just my, my opinion.
Go ahead, CAO.
Yeah, so, so we don't know what the cost would be of the actual event, and I suspect that they would be making application to the federal government, much the same as the project we talked about earlier, the film, they would, they would probably look for the federal government to cover the lion's share of the regatta, and obviously, having as many ports on site as possible would be to the advantage of that application. The issue that we always have with the Tall Ships events is, is participation in the smaller ports, because the, the captains of the ships are not necessarily required to attend every port, it's up to the individual captains where they go, and our experience in the past has been that we're told that we'll have five ships, or six ships, or so on, and even, you know, they're, they're paid so much money for the ports of call and so on, but, but sometimes they don't materialize for one reason or another, and so it's an awfully difficult event to market, because you, you try and build, build excitement, and then if, if the ships don't arrive, then you're, you're disappointing the market. The other thing is, with thirty-seven ports participating in Atlantic Canada through to Quebec City, you know, there's a pretty good chance that a larger port such as Halifax would participate, would have greater capacity to market the event, and somebody participating in the Halifax event would see more ships, because it's more likely the captains will bring their ships into that port. It, it's just not being the best for us, and the cost, as you've indicated, in the past, the cost has been, you know, in, in the ten thousand or so range, we just don't know what the cost would be this time, I can't really speak to that, but it's a, it's a, our, our past experience has not been exceptional.
What was your motion, that we pass? Seconded. Any discussion, anybody think differently? Yep, okay. Question's been called, all those in favor? Aye, contrary? Motion carried. I have this, what's this, this for later?
Yep.
Okay. Previously distributed, we're good additions, okay, let's get these done. Request for decision, vendors. CAO?
Thank you, worship, that's actually a request for direction. What we're looking for here is, we've been contacted by a, a mobile vendor who is interested in setting up on public property, and at present, we don't have a policy or bylaw on that, and if it was council's desire to have a bylaw or policy to permit vending on public property, then we could, we could draft something for you, and Caroline has, has included in the package there just the map from our Street Vendors bylaw, which shows you the, where in the streets vendors are permitted to, to set up at this time, so, because we don't have anything, any, any policy permitting it, until we, until we do, we won't, so we won't permit it, so it's for your consideration, and really, we're seeking direction.
Okay.
Thank you, your worship. Jeff, looking at the map here, number twelve, if I'm looking, I can see it right here, Elmas, El, is it Elmas Street? No, not, it's, is it number twelve, am I close here, it's hard to see? Or, it's hard for me to see. Isn't there, isn't there a, isn't there a street vendors place up just the road away, up the Road of Ways, up by the old Pashu Restaurant, or the old snack place?
So, unfortunately, way back, way back, you know, not that far back, but a while ago, number of years ago, there were actually specific parking spaces that were painted with a big yellow V.
That's correct.
For, for vendors.
Yeah.
And we went away from that, a number of years ago, to just saying any parking space within, within these areas.
Yeah, that's right.
So, because, because what happened was, we painted those places yellow, people took them as no, no parking.
That's right, yeah.
So now what we tell vendors is, if you have a, a license to vend in, say, section eleven, you can set up in any of the parking spaces in that area, but there's no space that there's, you know, pylons or barricades up reserving it for you, you have to get there when there's no car there and set up.
Oh, that's, that's the way you do it, you, you, you pay, you pay that amount, and your space is not guaranteed?
No, you have to show, so we have one hour or two hour parking, so chances are, within two hours, if you don't get there early in the morning and get your space, within two hours, somebody's going to move their vehicle, and you, you pull your, your.
Whatever you got.
Carver in there and set up.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay. That's not a really good way to do things, really. If I'm looking at it, because I do have one. And mine is not on Main Street or anything. But if I had one, that wouldn't be a good deal for me, you know. But anyway, nevertheless, there's... You say we don't have... The town-owned property on Elmas Street, it would have to be another provision put into planning strategy. We don't have it in there. And how long would it take to be put in place?
Well, Elmas Square is not a street.
Yeah.
Yeah, it used to be a street. It was closed back twenty years ago.
I didn't mean to say street. I meant to say square, yeah.
Yeah, that's what we were talking about, same place. So in order to provide for vending on there, we'd either have to do it through policy or bylaw. I'd probably defer to Greg in terms of which is the more appropriate.
And that takes time.
It takes a little bit of time.
Yeah, yeah. So this particular person would be probably better off on probably Main Street, picking a spot wherever, wherever.
Well, certainly, they could do that today. They could come in and buy a permit for any one of the spots or designated areas.
That could be Main Street or Water Street.
That's right.
Yeah, okay. So, yeah, and I mean, if that... I don't know who these people are or this person is. But to get him up and running, get her up and running, it would be probably whatever. And then maybe make an application for Elmas Square. And if it fits in with their planning, then should be no problem, because we are open for business. Okay, great, thank you.
So what are you looking for?
So this request is not about Elmas Square, but it's also about Killam's Wharf. It's about Beacon Park. It's about Myllo Boat Club. It's about the Ballfields, properties, public properties that we own. We don't have any provisions to permit vending, commercial vending, on those locations. And so our answer, unless we have some guidance, is we don't allow that. What we do allow is for vending in the street under the street vendors bylaw. Or they can buy a vendor's permit, and they can set up on private property with the permission of the owner. So we did have one request from a person this week. And so the question was, do you want us to consider adding a new policy or bylaw that would permit, under some conditions, vending on public property?
Thank you, Your Worship. I will make that a motion, that permitting vendors seasonal rental uses to establish a town-owned property. This is what they're looking for. So my motion is to direct staff to look into the possibility of setting up a policy with our Director of Planning, Caroline King, Director of Planning. Would that do it, Jeff? Okay, and that would be my motion, that we direct our staff, which would be calling, to do that.
Is this... Is vendors just the little things? Is this the great big groups that come in? Go ahead.
So, I mean, I'm not defining it in this conversation, but you can define it to me. And that's what I'm looking for, is direction. So I'll give you some examples of situations we've had in the past that haven't gone exceptionally well. We had a vendor of motor vehicles rent the parking lot at Mariner Center in 2007. And as a result of that activity, council wrote to Mariner Center and asked them to reconsider that. And I don't think they've done it since.
I don't think that's what we want.
Yeah, so that's why I need parameters. We've had situations, if I can just describe a couple of others. We've had other situations that have actually involved private property that have irritated local businesses, tax-paying businesses. And one was a vendor of car tires had set up at what used to be Frenchie's on Stars Road. And the fellow had a business, had a business permit from the town. He had an agreement with the property owner, and he was selling tires on the side of the road, basically, in the parking lot. And we had a number of calls from businesses in the town that sell tires, saying, you know, we pay taxes, we have our infrastructure costs and all that. And this guy comes in and sells tires, basically, out of the back of his truck, and that's not fair. Well, under our bylaws, it was perfectly acceptable. It was a permitted use. It was on private property, and he was properly licensed to do it. We had a situation another time when someone was selling furniture out of a building on Stars Road. And again, it was a number of calls to Town Hall. How can this be? This guy comes in, he signs a short-term lease, sells a whole bunch of furniture, discount rates, and damages the market. And our response was permitted use, private deal, and we have nothing to do with it. It was all above board. So we, you know, those are not, you know, popsicles and T-shirts. Those are bigger items. And so if we're going to get into permitting in public areas vending, then we have to recognize there won't always be local vendors. And we should put some parameters around the types of products that would be acceptable so that staff can set up the proper policy.
And size as well? Like the size of the... Is that sensible? I mean, you don't...
I'll just finish what I was going to say, yeah. Well, that's why we're directing Caroline to do something up now. The properties that you mentioned, they weren't town properties. They were... There weren't town properties. And I don't go along with that. I guess what I'm suggesting is, maybe it might be a hot dog cart. Maybe it might be a small luncheon wagon. Maybe it might be something that looks as hideous as that kiosk down there on Water Street. Who knows? Yeah, the yellow thing. So who knows? But it could be anything, anything like that, right? So I'm not talking people coming from afar to come and fill up all our town property spaces. She will give us some direction where she deems would be beneficial for the town and allow people to go into entrepreneur business and, you know, and sell their wares, that's all. And it might be just for food, it might be just for ice cream. Who knows? Let her work up a worksheet and see what we got.
Yes, okay. So...
I hear food.
Yeah, you need more direction than that, definitely. So... Yes. So is it fair to say with a local flair? Or is it... Is that fair?
Can I ask Frank a question?
Okay, yeah, Frank?
Frank, like, say, if somebody came in from... They had a soccer tournament here in Yarmouth, and somebody came in that sold shin pads and, you know, retro soccer jerseys. Is that allowed on any of our property? Like, any of the property that you take care of?
I'm not aware of that happening, no.
Have you ever had any requests? Like, I'm thinking the Canadian National, like, the old timers' baseball championships. Like, they set up... Remember, they set up one year, they had...
T-shirts.
T-shirts, straw shirts, windbreakers, hats?
That has happened. I know back when Richard DeBeem was part of the soccer club, he always had his van, and he had socks and shin pads and that sort of stuff there. It wasn't, you know, I guess he did sell something. So that does happen from time to time, tournament-related. But usually, tournaments, sometimes, I think it comes with some kind of food, barbecue fundraiser or something like that.
Yeah, okay.
So, go ahead, Counselor Dennis?
I think you're right on, we should have about the size. And then I think other, too, should be things that aren't in direct competition with your businesses.
That's too... Sorry, with respect, I think that's too vague and too subjective. I think if you're going to say, I mean, give, you know, handcrafts, you know, made by the vendor, or food items, or souvenir items, you know, we can work with that. But when you talk about direct competition, you know, is a popsicle in direct competition with a plate of french fries? Or, you know, I don't know. It's food, it fills your belly, and you can only have so much, right? So that one is a little difficult to work with. But if you can provide some generalities in this discussion, we can go away and create a list that you can scratch off or add to or whatever.
The list. Because I was just thinking where you were saying, like, somebody came in with tires. So you're in competition with people who actually sell tires or cars or whatever.
Limited to the type of uses you can permit it.
Yeah.
You know, if it's a hot dog cart or if it's... Let's not sell tires. Let's not sell whatever, whatever. And if you're going to sell food, hot dog, or whatever, then, I don't know. Let her look at it, come back with some things.
But what Jeff is saying is, we just need to provide...
Direction.
More direction. Right? Or a little more.
Yeah, I mean, we can work with it. The thing is, is that a tire, as an example, you know, you can sell a tire in any commercial zone in the town. And they tend to be sold in one particular commercial zone. But there's nothing stopping somebody from selling tires on Main Street. You know, so... But we can define things, and similar to maybe our street vendor bylaw has some parameters around it.
I don't think it's... I don't think it really works very well. I think, you know, if it's... Maybe you're a policy... It's... Caroline, I think, would probably have more perspective on this than what I have. For a lot of certain things. She would know, probably fits. But if she doesn't, she would bring up a list of things that might fit and might not fit. And we could at least take it from there. And usually, it just goes to the planning, and it comes back. So this is a... Okay, so anyway, if she can work something else, something, you know, I mean, I don't know. Let her...
But we're not saying what we're looking for. That's the problem, but... Okay, we're good.
We could probably search out other communities and what they allow and come back with... Because this was just kind of today, so we can check it out.
Good? Okay, so there's a motion on the floor. The motion is for to direct staff to... Looking, yeah. You do? Oh, okay. No, 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 no. We need to make sure you've got enough direction.
Yeah, I get the flavor.
Flavor? Okay. Any more discussion?
A little bit. I mean, I... I don't know what this particular person wants, maybe to sell food or ice cream or whatever. I don't know. It's not a person? Yeah, I understand that. But there's going to be people that are going to be on public property. This is just one. So, I mean, we have to... Caroline and ourselves have to look and see what we do want to be sold there. To give young entrepreneurs a chance to sell whatever they're going to sell and whatever. It's, I don't know, is it a kiosk thing? Is it a push cart or whatever?
But that's the question. So when we're providing direction to Caroline, it's not what she wants. It's what are we thinking we would like on public property? So is it a kiosk? Is it somebody able to drive in with their tractor, trailer?
No, no.
We don't want that, right? So we have to... When we say to her, here's some direction, I think we need to just say, you know, we're looking at kiosks. Maybe they fit within a... This type of space.
It depends on where...
We're not looking at...
No, no. I guess probably let her look. Let her look and see what she can find out there that people have in other towns that they rent on public spaces. See what it is. I don't think it's that hard of a job, really.
Well, you can...
It's not a hard job. It's...
Yeah, and you can set up a kiosk. You can have the nicest-looking kiosk of all time. But if you're selling something from Sister Sarah's on public property, I don't think that would go over the best, right? So... Well, it depends what you're looking for, yeah. But the other thing is... The other thing is, it doesn't make any difference what you set up. It's going to be like the tire situation. If you set up something in the downtown core that is selling any kind of food, coffee, drink, there's people there that are set up in permanent establishments that are there three hundred and sixty-five days a year that are going to feel slighted because they're paying full-time property taxes. Somebody can come up and set up during a sea fest, or come during shark fest, or come during fireworks night. Maybe we'll talk about that a little later. But that can come up, they can make a few dollars and then get out. I know the fee covers what? The... That might be another thing you have to look at, is there's going to be a different fee structure than regular vending, too. So it's going to be... It doesn't make any difference what product's going to be sold. There's going to be a conflict with somebody that has a permanent establishment, either in the downtown or Stars Road.
I was just thinking about the comments, and, you know, there are some public spaces that are fairly limited in terms of the space. And I'm not sure that I would be recommending if it were me. Excuse me, if it were me, I'm not sure I'd be recommending to permit it on Killam Wharf, because the big events that occur there tend to fill the area. And you have street vending available to you right out in the street. So there is an option there for commercial vending adjacent to the event without taking up the space from the public. Other areas where there's more space, you know, whether there was an event at Beacon Park or at the Ballfields, where there's more space available, that's a different thing. I'd be a little careful about where I would allow the activity, not just the size of it and what the products are.
Yeah, I agree. Go ahead.
Do you think maybe we could just table it till our next meeting so that we have time to think about it?
Or do we need to table?
That's what you want to do.
Vote on, tabling it? Okay. I want to move to...
I'll make a motion that we table it till our next committee at the hall? Or should we do it to council?
We need... Yeah, we need to figure out what we're after.
Right.
And we need to think about it. I can't even think on the spot here. But next committee, the whole might be too late, too.
Yeah, no. Excuse me. Staff didn't want to go down this road and invest time and effort in drafting a policy or bylaw. If there was no interest at the council level, clearly, there's some interest. And you've given some feedback here. So if you table the motion now, no work will occur between now and when it comes back to the table. If you allow the motion to pass, staff will undertake some work to bring forward some ideas for you to be able to consider. So my suggestion is, if you're interested in entertaining it, then allow staff to do some work, to put some parameters around it, and we'll bring it back to you. And at that point, you don't have to move forward with it if you have second thoughts. But at least you have more information before you, on which to base that decision.
Okay, I'm good with that, yeah.
Yeah, me, too. Okay. Any more discussion? The scoop is, your motion still stands. Yep.
Yes. Perfect.
Okay. Question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? Motion carried. Oh, I've got more papers here than I've got... No, but you know what? We got a better idea of what we're after.
Yeah.
Okay, CAO? That's okay. Request for Decision Canada 150 Infrastructure. Did we just do that? Nova Scotia Moves?
Moves? Where are we moving to?
CAO?
Dave isn't here. But just to let you know, the Nova Scotia Moves program that we accessed when we did the Maud Lewis Trail, I believe for fifty percent funding on that. The Maud Lewis Trail, between Parade Street and Stars Road, we accessed funding through Nova Scotia Moves, which is all about active transportation. They're doing another intake, and we'd like... and we'd like to submit a project. And Dave, Dave is hopeful that they would be receptive to a project either to do the half, half light on Stars Road, which would facilitate pedestrians and bicycles crossing Stars Road with, with a traffic signal style stop that would be activated by the pedestrian, or extend the trail from Parade Street to Forest Street on Clements Avenue. So, what I'd like to have your, your agreement to, is that, is that he would, he would investigate, you know, their appetite for either of those projects, or maybe both. And if we're able to secure fund, or if we're, if it looks promising, we'll make the application, and, and if we're successful, follow through with the project.
Sounds good. Second.
Question's been called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary, motion carried. Fireworks.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, thank you, Your Worship. Well, we just got some good news earlier from our finance director, chief finance director, something in the words of $100,000. See where everybody, I know, I know we're, we're really fixed on budgets, and we haven't got any money to do this, but scenes where there's $100,000 that just freed up, just a thought, and I'll ask it around the table, is that everybody enjoys the fireworks. It's a big thing. People just absolutely love it. It brings lots of people in, in our town, and they really enjoy it, and they have been for a number of years. Is it possible to Jeff or the CEO, scenes where we have a small windfall, that we could, instead of taking anything from what, what Jeff had said earlier, from other projects that we had, is it, can we take some of the $5,000 or $6,000 from that windfall of $100,000 that we saved, and make this happen, the fireworks happen? My question would be to the CEO or to the finance director.
Just to, just to facilitate, I'll make a motion that we direct staff to find additional funds in the existing budget to match those of Heritage Canada, to make it easier.
What'll happen with that, the payment for the RCMP where it's less than expected, is that money will fall to our surplus account for last year. So we'll have more money in the surplus account. So, the only way to access that this year would be to make a recommendation or a motion to actually take money from surplus in this year to help pay for stuff.
Can we, can we do, can we do $5,000 worth of fireworks?
I'm gonna do 10.
Instead of 10? Can't do it? No, I just didn't know. I didn't know how it worked, right? I'm not, I just, I, I'm
To do with $5,000, or anybody's money?
Okay. Sorry, I'm just gonna say, we're so tight on money, putting $5,000 into fireworks doesn't work for me, but it's probably gonna work for everybody else at the date, and that's fine. Just doesn't work for me. The motion is to direct staff to
Direct staff to find additional funds in the existing budget to match those of Heritage Canada.
Need a light? We have no money.
Do we have any money set aside for fireworks at the present, at all?
We just have the $5,000 that came through Heritage, Heritage Canada. That's it. But we need five more to have the fireworks show. So.
So, unlike, I agree with Frank, if you don't have 30 minutes, or 17, or 18, or 20 minutes of fireworks, then you have no show, really.
What's that?
With the boats? Yeah.
No.
Is this only
Good point. You just added in with the, you can't.
Oh, you can't?
Oh, okay, okay, I got your can.
Okay, question on, question?
At this point, at this point, I'm probably gonna, so we have $5,000 right now, and so if we don't use it for fireworks, we don't get it. Is that right?
Well, I haven't heard back from Heritage Canada. I asked, we've applied a long time ago, got the funding. I haven't heard back, but we've asked the question if we can reorganize the funds without the fireworks show that we applied for.
Okay.
I haven't got an answer on it.
I asked this
When do we need an answer? When do you hope to get an answer? Do you have any idea, Frank?
I've, I've already been in contact with Fireworks FX, and they need to know ASAP to start plans, and start ordering shells.
Is this just us?
I was hoping to talk to them tomorrow to know if they'll show it, or not.
Have, have we, have we asked the municipalities? And I say that because everybody, everybody's in here for it. It's not a, it's not a Towny Yarmouth show, it's a
It's a county show.
It's a county show. Go ahead.
The municipality of Yarmouth has participated in the past. I don't believe last year, maybe the year before. Frank's shaking his head, no. It's maybe been a couple of years, but they have Okay. So they have participated. Typically not, not at the level the town has, so usually, you know, maybe a thousand dollars or so would, would come in. So.
What are you thinking?
At this point, I'm not gonna be supportive. If we're struggling with budget challenges, I'm not sure if I understood totally what Jerry said earlier this afternoon, but, but, and I think I follow what he, what you guys are trying to tell me now. But I know that fireworks certainly engage a lot of, a lot of people, and, and it is exciting, and
So, are we gonna be able to find it? Like, are we?
So, so there's, there's, there are two different things that have been talked about here, as far as how we would pay, pay an extra $5,000. One was, the motion is to find it within the existing budget. What Jerry had indicated is that you could, you could do a motion to transfer funds out of your accumulated surplus, which is not, that's not the same thing. Your existing budget doesn't include your, your, your reserve accounts, right? So if you were gonna do that, if that's how you were gonna pay for it, you'd bring the money out of, out of your surplus, and, and that would add to the bottom line, and you'd be able to do it. Find it within your current budget means you find it within your current revenues, without bringing additional money out of your, out of your reserves or surplus. So, it's
Jerry?
More than 5,000.
More than 5,000.
Jerry, what are you saying? What do you, what do you think? Am I allowed to ask that? Is that inappropriate?
I'll withdraw my motion. Uh, so make the motion that we take $5,000 to match Heritage Canada funding for fireworks, just the surplus.
I can support that.
I'm not done yet. I'm almost. I feel like Danny. Are we good? We're not good. We're not good, but
Yeah, we, we do have a very significant surplus account. I forget the top of my head how big it is, but it's a large number.
That's, okay, we're good. All right. Questions? Do you wanna?
I'll just add this to the conversation, because we've had issues like this before, on different issues that come up. And this is another one. I remember the tuna, the tuna gate down in Wedgeport, where they asked for funding. You remember, Jeff? And they always, they always ask for funding after we give the grant monies out. They did it for a few years, and we sent them off a letter saying, you know, get it in early, so we don't have to go for extra funding, and anybody else. So, perhaps in our, in our budgeting next year, we can allot for this 5,000, up to $5,000 for, for this, for the fireworks funding. It, it, it's important to, to the citizens and the, the people that live in the, in the communities, in the counties, that they enjoy this. It's a big thing for them.
So, okay, go ahead, and then I'm gonna ask a question.
So, so $5,000 isn't enough on its own to do a fireworks show. And we're gonna deal with another, actually, we're gonna deal with another situation a little bit later in camera, and I, I'll elaborate on, on that. That situation, I think, illustrates the challenge that we have a little better than this one, but I, yeah, so stay tuned. Stay tuned, okay?
Okay. And Frank, it's not that we don't want fireworks, it's that when everything is so tight, boy, what do you pick? Right? Like, you, you just have to be careful. I guess I'm thinking, if I have my own bank account, where would I put just the surplus? Where would I, would I dig into my surplus to, to do that?
So that's, that was the question I was gonna have, is that I've been involved with the fireworks applications and organization of the shooting and calling it off and all that stuff for five or six years. Rodney and I work
Yeah.
In tandem with that. And I guess I'm just wondering for next year, when we apply, do we apply, or don't we apply, or?
Okay, so I can answer that right now. And, and after we finish this motion, I think, Danny, if you wanna make the motion that we refer the $5,000 to budget for next year? Okay? And then it's done, Frank, because it's, it's only, it's not done. No, it's not done till the budget's done, but at least it's on the book. Like, it's on, it's up for discussion, right? And, and we want fireworks, but it's just af, after the, right? That, that's all. It's all, it's all good. It's all good. No, none of it's Frank's fault. Oh, no, heavens, no.
Cause I was kinda shocked that it wasn't
Oh, no, don't ever, no. This is not bad. This is just us trying to figure money. Who was gonna speak? Go ahead.
So, so we
You're next.
We had to, as, as everyone knows, and maybe, you know, this is the toughest budget year we've had in a very long time. And, you know, so we had to make some decisions, including, you know, we cut our community grants, we cut, we trimmed a lot of things, and this is one of the lines that we trimmed. You know, and, and maybe, maybe that was, maybe that was not a good choice on our part, right? Maybe we weren't clear about that, and maybe it wasn't a good choice. But, you know, taking it out of surplus is, is, we're letting ourselves a little off the hook, but we're also not going back two weeks after we approved the budget and telling somebody we've got $5,000 less. So, at this point, that, that's okay, and we will, we'll be mindful of this discussion in our decisions next year around budget. But, but we made that decision, not Frank. Frank did what, what he's always done, has been expected to do.
Yeah. No, this is, this is us, Frank. I hope you knew that.
No, I, I was just wondering about, for next year
Yeah.
Carry on, do the similar type of thing?
Yes, absolutely.
Ask for the moon, and then we could, cause, you know, I guess the worst-case scenario is, if we didn't have a show and didn't have the money
Yeah.
We, I think maybe we've done it once, that we have returned money
Yeah.
That we could not justify with our application for, so.
And, and it's not just, it's not just this. It's, I think we understood when we did the budget, every, every extra penny that comes across the desk is gonna have to be discussed. We have to figure out, you know, what's important and what isn't, and, and this is a big, it's a big community draw. It's a, it's a big deal, but it's also $5,000. So, deputy?
It's only for 20 minutes, though.
I know.
Anyway, I want to mention
It brings them in town.
I understand what, what Jeff has said, and, and the budget is challenging to work with every year. We, what about reaching out to the community, and maybe there's some people out there who might contribute to the town of Yarmouth and get an, an income tax receipt for, for their income tax next, the following year. So there's, you know, 200, 250, 500, a thousand dollars, that maybe someone might like to contribute to, to that effort for that evening. Thank you.
Thank you. One, two, three, four. Okay, so the motion is on the floor. Phil, what was the last motion? To take out a surplus? Okay. Any further discussion? Question's been called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary, motion carried. Phew. We are looking for, we are No. Yes. We were missing one person. Oh, no, but you know what's, you know what else we didn't? No, we didn't say you weren't here. Do you vote in favor? Huh? Good. Yeah, you're in. Okay, so, there was another thing. Were you going to make a motion to refer this to budget? Is that the appropriate thing to do? Okay, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Your Worship. Yes, Your Worship. Perhaps we can put a, a $5,000 budget for the fireworks in our next year's finance, when we go for the finance next year, we could put that in, in part of our planning. I make that a motion.
Linda? Moved and seconded, discussion? Question's been called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary, motion carried. Okay, a motion to go in camera. You good? Okay. Okay, so we are, right now, thanks, Chief, we're just gonna have a council, we're gonna do the council meeting. So, call the mo, call the meeting to order record of attendance. Okay, you and the audience, you're gonna have, you're gonna, no, you're not interrupting. Record of attendance, declarations of a conflict of interest, approval of agenda, which is one I don't, okay? Go ahead, CAO. We're just looking for a motion to, go ahead. Okay. With regard to the granulars, Linda, you're good for that. Okay? Did you second it? Moved and seconded, discussion? Question's been called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary, motion carried. Motion to go in camera. Yep, no, it's good. I have to, I need two minutes.